Good evening, the time is now 5:34 and I would like to call to order the October 16th, 2023 Academic Achievement Committee meeting. I am Dr. Zippur Miller, Chair of the Committee and the District Five Representative of Prince George's County Board of Education. If everyone could please introduce themselves, starting with the committee members, other board members, Prince George's County Public Schools Administrative Staff, and then the Board Office staff.
Okay, I'll go ahead and start Pamela Boozer Struther, Vice Chair of the Committee and District Three Board of Education Member.
Hello, everybody. I'm Madeline Lasalle Fraser, District Eight.
Hi, I'm Judy McInnes Murray, Chair of the Board and Ex-Officer, member of this committee.
David Murray, Board of Education, District One.
Good evening, Kia McDaniel, Director of Curriculum and Instruction.
And good evening, David Reese Jr., Office of Equity, Diversity, and Belonging.
Betsy White, Diversity Strategy Officer, Office of Equity, Diversity, and Belonging. Good evening, everyone.
Hi, I'm Stephanie Bailey. I'm an Equity Coach in the Office of Equity, Diversity, and Belonging.
Good evening, my name is Rosa Lopez. I'm Board Administrative Secretary for the Board Office.
Thank you so much, everyone, and thank you for being here this evening. Ms. Lopez, could you please call the roll?
Dr. Zippur Miller.
Present.
Ms. Boozer Strutter.
Present.
Mr. Jackson. Mrs. Lasalle Fraser.
Present.
Mr. Murray.
Present.
And we have Miss McInnes Murray, but she's an ex-officer.
Thank you, thank you. So we have quorum. May I have a motion to adopt the October 16th, 2023 meeting agenda?
I make a motion that we adopt the October 16th, 2023 agenda.
Second.
All in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. The agenda is adopted. May I have a motion to approve the September 11th, 2023 meeting minutes?
Make a motion to approve the September 11th, 2023 meeting minutes.
Second.
Signify by saying aye if you're in favor.
Aye.
Aye. The agenda is adopted. We have no registered public comments speakers this evening. So at this time, I will now yield the floor to Dr. Kia McDaniel, who will be serving in Dr. White's stead to present the team that for this evening's agenda item, Equity, Diversity, and Belonging, Pulling Back the Layers, Equity Leads Dash to Action, The Theory Behind Practice.
Thank you, Dr. Miller. We're excited to have team members from the Equity, Diversity, and Belonging Office here with us this evening, as is our structure for this school year's Academic Achievement Committee. The team is going to be sharing the theory behind the practice, some of the implementation of the work of Equity Leads in the school, and then when they return in February, they'll be bringing some additional team members and school-based support to just kind of give an overview of how they are implementing some of the things that's been, that's going to be shared with us this evening. So with that, I'm going to turn it over to you, Dr. Reese.
Thank you so much.
So I was going to ask Dr. McDaniel, I don't know whether it was just me, could everybody hear? Because I don't know if she'll be presenting as well.
I could hear her just fine.
Okay, so it may have just been me. Sorry about that.
No worries, and I'm not presenting, so.
You never know with me, I might want to pull you in because you're my sister in an office right across the street. So good evening, everyone. It's a pleasure, truly a pleasure to be here with you all. And for those of you who are joining us, hello out there. Again, my name is David Reese Jr. and I am the Director of the Office of Equity, Diversity, and Belonging. Before we leave this slide, though, I just want to say a couple of things to kind of orient everyone to what we're doing today. I'm excited that Dr. White had the vision to title this session, "The Theory Behind the Practice", and that's because there's been a lot of excitement and energy around this new powerful tool that we have in the Prince George's County School District in collaboration with Hanover Research. And that tool that you'll see a little bit later today is called the Equity Dashboard. And I've been around the system in a lot of different ways, in different capacities as consultant, employee champion, and employee again since about 2011. And this is the first time that I am aware of where we've had a data source that was going to be public-facing, that all community members, school board members, teachers, students, anyone would have access to, that lets them know about the performance of the district and in ways that look at equity and inequity. And so this is actually a pretty huge undertaking. And I've done a lot of work in the past around scaling initiatives through throughout school districts. And the challenge I want to pose to us today is one of scale. So we have a new tool that the school board has been very excited about, that offers a lot of opportunity. And now we have to make sure that everyone has access to the rich data that are there and that we have the collective skill to know how to interpret the data that are there in useful ways and know how to move forward to help individual schools and individual communities of learners in our district. So the outcome of this session today is to invite the Board of Education to partner with us in some vision casting. So I want you all to think about, as you see elements of the tool and what we think our plan is, we want you to offer your absolute best thinking, your hopes and fears, your consideration, so that as we move forward, we're all working in tandem towards one objective. So I look forward to that at the end of the presentation. And that was the cue for the next slide. All right. And so we are all familiar with, I hope, the mission and vision of the Prince George's County Public School System. And I really want to just kind of zone in for a moment on the mission side and yellow, where it says, "We are aiming to provide a transformative educational experience anchored by excellence and equity, developing 21st century competencies and enabling each student's," and I want to put this in bold, "each student's unique brilliance, unique brilliance, to flourish in order to build empowered communities, communities, in a more inclusive and just world." So as we think about the events that are happening in the world right now, there's so many global and local events that are happening that are impacting us, it is incumbent upon us to be sure that we're empowering each student to be their absolute best, to bring all of his, her, or their tools to the table to make the world a better place. So thank you all for pushing and joining us in that mission for PGCPs. On the following slide, you see an excerpt, and everyone has access to this out there in the ether, the excerpt, if you can go back one more slide, to our, back the other way, the other back. Great. The PGCPS Transformation 2026 Strategic Plan Framework. And the only thing I want to zoom in here, because there's a lot of text, is the center box is kind of red or orange, depending on what your computer is showing you right now. And it says, "We want to have an organizational learning culture." For me, this is one of the most, if not the most important aspect of what our system is aiming for. In order to have a culture of learning for everyone, people need to feel invited, safe, that they can participate, and ask questions. And questions are not necessarily challenges. And sometimes passionate disagreement is a good thing and it's healthy if it's anchored in a culture where we know that people are bringing their best, their passions, and their energy to improving the learning culture of PGCPs. So I'm sure some of us have passions on the call today. I invite you to bring those passions as we talk about what next steps can look like in order to make sure that we are doing the best for our community. And the next slide. The Division of Academics, Dr. McDaniel and Dr. White, a few years ago, really led a lot of stakeholders across the system into creating a student learner profile. And Dr. White challenged, she said, "At any time that you are presenting to anyone, I want you to focus on an aspect of the student learner profile that we spent a lot of time creating that is an anchor to our strategic plan." And you can look at it very quickly and see that when we talk about the unique brilliance of each individual student, there are lots of ways where that brilliance can show up in being a global citizen, a communicator, a critical thinker and pusher, a creator and innovator. And in this world today, in the world of artificial intelligence and all kinds of other things, we definitely need a lot of creativity and innovation, and we want people to be goal-directed learners, to be able to understand, this is where I want to go, and have staff and families and students work together to figure out how best to meet those goals. All right, so now let's get into the heavy lifting, so to speak. Betsy White, who joined our team recently as our Diversity Strategy Officer, has this this great idea. So as we, as we continue to see work in Prince George's County, you hear the question, "Did you know?" And the slide says, "Did you know that black boys in PGCPs begin school with the same or higher levels of kindergarten readiness as all other students?" And the data that you see here comes from the Hanover Equity Dashboard that I told you about earlier, that everyone now has access to. And what we love about this tool is that our school-based Equity Leads, who are staff members who work at each school, have received a lot of support and professional learning with understanding how to use this tool, how to disaggregate data, and how to find compelling stories that illuminate, confirm, or sometimes refute what we think might be happening within our system. And the reason why it's important to know that black boys enter kindergarten with a higher level of readiness or the same readiness as all other students, and that's what this is showing us, where in Group A, you can see the red circle where it says the gender is male, the race is black, and it's all students. And for B, you see that the gender is all and the race is all. So we're looking at all students compared to just black, black males. And you can see that for the year 2022, for example, 30.1% of black boys were measuring ready for kindergarten, whereas 24.6% of all students, where it says, as you look at that data and move across, every single year, you see something that might be a counter-narrative, something opposite what we might expect to see based off of the types of conversations that we tend to hear about black boys in our school system. And given the recent news that we've learned about our performance compared to other school districts and how black and Latinx students are performing, students who are black and Latinx are performing better in Prince George's County than they are in some of our other local school systems in Maryland. It's important to note that. But I want to pause for a moment, because our Equity Leads at the school level are also learning this thing called Principles of Responsible Data Use. So did you know that when I sit down to take this kindergarten readiness assessment, there might be a time when the, the teacher who's administering the, the assessment to the student might say, you know, "This is, this is a wallet. I'm holding my wallet up right now." And the teacher might say, "What color is the wallet?" And if the student says azul, did you know the student doesn't get credit for that response? So when I talk about, we have to be careful when we get data from this powerful tool, there are certain information we have to know about the assessments, and we call that assessment literacy that's required, so that when we're reading the data, we understand the implications. Because we have a lot of Latinx students in particular, who might see this and say azul. But our protocol says, from the state, they don't receive credit for that. What color is that? Blue is the only correct answer, and it must be said in the English language. Given the diverse languages that people are speaking in Prince George's County, whereas the data say that black boys enter kindergarten already, I have a whole host of wonderings now around what readiness looks like for the myriad students for whom English is not their first language, but they know their stuff and aren't getting credit for it. So in this school district, as we scale this really powerful tool to all principals, assistant principals, school-based Equity Leads, and you, Board of Education members, we have some work to do to understand what inferences we can really make from the data. So that's a lot of the work behind the scenes that hopefully school leadership teams will dig their heels in and figure out all the learning that they have to do in order to make sure that we're focused on the right work. Next slide. And I see you are writing good juicy questions now, so I can't wait to entertain them at the end. So based off of this, and we just showed you one stagnant slide, and there's probably a thousand different choices a person could choose to make when they're looking at that Equity Dashboard to try to figure out what might be happening in beautiful PGCPs. And so what happens next is a series of opportunities to attack disproportionality relentlessly and change the narrative around black and Latino boys in PGCPs. Then you might be asking, "Why is David talking about black boys and Latino? Why, why does he keep using those, those two words?" Well, every year since I've come into the district, we've had something called an Equity Focus Area. Year one, we focused on students who might be a part of the LGBTQ plus community and did a lot of professional learning to support understanding that population and needs connected to people who are a part of that, part of that family. And then last year, we spent a lot of time focusing on students who are learning the English language, students who are multilingual, emphasizing those who are newcomers to the United States to think about what those experiences are like. And this year, our focus is on black and Latino male students who represent over half of the student population in PGCPs. And both of these groups are groups of people, when you look at national data and national stories and national headlines, deserve to have a narrative about them that is positive, affirming, and correct and true to who they are. So that's why all of our slides have that focus, is because that's the conversation that we're pushing principals, assistant principals, school-based Equity Leads, and you to focus on this year. Next slide. Okay. And so because of the opportunity, there are a lot of opportunities that we have with this Equity Dashboard, lots of stakeholder access to a range of data, like I said earlier, for the first time that I'm aware of, the same data sets. And because of that enhanced accountability and transparency will be important. So as, as a school board, you all are very, very good, as I've been watching your work, at asking good questions and pushing us to do better by everyone in our school district, our staff. And I invite that because the accountability should be high. And the transparency is really important, so we can all be on the same page around knowing where we're going. That requires an intense amount of collaboration and learning for everyone together. And so I ask people all the time, be serious as a learner, but also be patient with other people's learning, because it takes time to really understand and unpack all of the data that will be in front of you. So never hesitate to ask questions, say, "I see something and I'm not sure what's behind that," so that others, that a lot of staff members, we have a lot of expertise in Prince George's County, can help us understand what's behind the data. And last, we have the opportunity to tell really powerful stories around our systemic focus areas. And if you saw the last board meeting, you saw Dr. Strater do a very powerful presentation, telling a very powerful story around what performance looks like in Prince George's County. And those are things that you, narratives that you might not see in the headlines, because we have to go a little bit deeper to really see what's behind the numbers, because that connects to people, right? And it connects to practice, and it connects to just a lot. All right, and the next part of this presentation talks about the rollout. As you could imagine, we're a very large district and it's taking quite a long time, in some ways, to make sure everyone has access to the information. Dr. White had a meeting with all of academics. Dr. McDaniel was there, about 400 people, about a couple of weeks ago, all went into the platform and looked at it and had their minds blown by what they were seeing, some of them for the first time. Feliz de Souza and Monitoring and Accountability and her team have looked at this, and they're thinking about implications for our CSI schools, our ATS I schools, and how the information in this dashboard can really help really shape the specific work at the school level. And we had our, our, our school-based Equity Leads who gave some reactions to the professional development that Stephanie, Jason, and Jorance Campbell did with them just the other day. So I'll pause for a moment, and actually, because I've been talking so much. Stephanie, would you mind reading those three that are there for me so we can get past my monotone voice?
Sure. One school-based Equity Lead said, "I had no idea that this data was already compiled. It's very helpful in order to address disparities within ethnic groups. The ability to quickly see different groups side by side was a real aha moment. It quickly helps identify trends and patterns. The dashboard offers so many insightful and impactful data pieces to think about. Having this information readily available as we work with our team this year will help."
Wonderful. So if you could imagine the hundred, the almost 200, we have 200 slots for Equity Leads because you can have one per school, our office is working with them directly. Again, they had their minds blown, and this is just a quick snapshot at what school-based staff members were saying based off of their experience with it. So there's a lot of excitement and energy around moving the work forward and scaling so that everyone has access and the same understanding. And then I want to move relatively quickly now through the rest of the slides that are there. And this is the theory part. So imagine, imagine there is a school-based Equity Lead. This is not a real story, we're imagining right now, we're in Imagine Land, all right? I want you all to vision with me. And the school-based Equity Lead is out of middle school, and their name is Horace. And Horace attended this training with our office around the Equity Dashboard. Next slide. And Horace was wondering, you know, "I'm doing this data dive, I'm looking at stuff, I'm clicking on all the different areas, trying to figure out what's going on," and Horace noticed something. Hispanic and Latinx male students consistently have fewer disciplinary incidents reported to MSDE than all other students in middle school. Number one, our protocol is, what did you see that confirmed something you thought to be true, illuminated or refuted something in you to be true? And we could think about where Horace was on that continuum. And then Horace said, "Wait a minute, this represents a real opportunity here, because I'm noticing that Group A, which has the male Hispanic Latinx population in 2022, 7.7% of them had a disciplinary, disciplinary incident, whereas 9.8% had a disciplinary incident in 2022. And as you read the data pre-pandemic and during the pandemic and post-pandemic, for every single year, it is true that Hispanic and Latinx male students have fewer disciplinary incidents than all students in PGCPs." Next slide. So imagine that Horace and this Equity Team come together for their pre-service professional learning, and they're looking at culture and climate, and they have this wondering, which is a natural wondering. We're coming, I still have my Hispanic Heritage Month up, because we love our Latinx teachers, because I'm going to hold on to it. I know it's the 16th, and it's technically passed, but it's every day. They, they, they begin to wonder why Hispanic Latinx male students have fewer disciplinary incidents, and so they start to record their questions they have about this. Next slide. Horace remembers that student learner profile that Dr. McDaniel and Dr. White have been pushing in the system to make sure that we're all centered in it, on it. And they have this idea around creators and innovators, and you know, is there an opportunity here to engage students and helping us to address some problems that might exist in PGCPs? And this group of students has an asset, right? Because there's some, whether they know it or not, there's something that they're doing that we all might need to learn from. Next slide. So with his principal's support, because they're all on the same page, they decide to convene a group of Hispanic and Latinx male students so they can learn more about, "What are you doing? Did you know that as a group, you all are, your behavior, you having fewer incidents, did you know that? And can you help us understand, how are you responding to teachers, to staff? What gets you excited about school? Like, help us understand what's working for you so that we can scale those practices or teach other people about it?" I don't know, because we want you to create, innovate, and help us solve some of the discipline problems that we have in our school district. And the Equity Team then imagined they're presenting their findings to the principal. It gets into the Positive Behavior Support System, and then through the assets of the Latinx male community, we are now moving and grooving, trying to figure out how to better support other groups of students in PGCPs. Next slide. So they celebrate the students for their contributions, made possible by the work of so many stakeholders, but because the school board, Office of Equity, Diversity, and Belonging, all the academics team, the Monitoring and Accountability team, everybody's been celebrating them, we're all paying attention. And imagine what happens with distorted approaches, climate and culture, feeling like you belong in a school, because we know from our students, who know best, how best to help other students regarding some of the discipline incidences that we see. And remember, for some people, this is, represents a counter-narrative, because some people might not think about this group of students as having this asset and this strength that they can share with us. Next slide. And so now we're at a discussion point. So we gave you a fictitious example, which absolutely could be real, because it's steeped in data. And if our engines are firing in the way that we need them to, imagine the power that schools can have and that the central office can have and that the school board can have to have the collective asset-based conversation about what's real in Prince George's County and use that as a way to get even better. So with that, what excites you most about these opportunities? And I don't really know how, Dr. Miller, you all like to engage with questions and answers. So I'll kick it back to you, and then we have a whole team who can respond.
So this, this is a presentation, right? Or are you coming back? I want to gauge the time so we can...
This is, this is a presentation.
Okay.
I, I do think we're coming back. Was it in February, Dr. McDaniel?
Gotcha. Okay, no, I was wondering whether you had a part two. Okay, I was wondering whether you had a part two tonight, so I can gauge the time. So we'll just go with the same format where we will just limit our time to five minutes, and then second round, three minutes, and then we'll see what, what, how we're doing for time at that point. So you could just signify by raising your hand, and then we'll go from there. Board Member Lasalle Fraser.
Thank you, Madam Chair. First of all, I want to just thank everybody. I am so excited about this. This is one of the most exciting things since I've been a school board member, so thank you for that. I've been looking for the opportunity to have these dashboards and be able to be transparent to the community. So I, I already see that this is going to be a wonderful tool for everyone. But I'm wondering, can you share a little bit about how is it going to roll out in terms of how we're going to use it as a training opportunity for our, our, our staff? And then how are we going to roll it out to help our families and public learn about it? And then what are your plans for us as the school board to engage in some training of our own so that we can learn perhaps from each of the districts? I would love to spend a day just diving into the data. It, I'm nerd when it comes to these things. I love data, so this is going to be great. But I'm wondering, what are the plans and how can we support it?
All right, thank you for that question, and Stephanie and Betsy, please jump in. And I tend to do, I always forget we're formal in Prince George's County, so Ms. Bailey and Ms. White, feel free to jump in whenever, whenever you, whenever you want to. So the scale challenge in Prince George's County, because we're a very large school district, is a real one. So it's important to note that, as I said earlier, all of academics has had their initial foray into the Equity Dashboard, and so has, so have many people on Doug Strater's team, Dr. Strater's team, and the Accountability Division, specifically in Monitoring and Accountability. We did some work with all the principal supervisors in the area offices to reintroduce them to this tool. And when they were reintroduced to the tool, they had new information, and that is, this is something we're all using. When they first learned about it, there was this tool that's out there that has really cool information. But now they all know, not only is everyone going to be using not only is everyone going to be using it, but we have to build everybody's capacity. So as you and I want to be brief in my res- brief in my response, I know it's the whole five-minute thing. I'm a big talker. Um, you will be able to reach out to my office for sure and lots of other people who can help direct and guide us in how to use the dashboard and what some of those data-wise principles of responsible data use look like so that we can learn how to make good and correct inferences from the data that we see. So it's going to take time because you can always learn something. You can learn for forever. Um, you, it, it just never stops. Uh, and so a part of the role I was making sure that more people in the central office are on the same page with it. And then we can work with school board members or whomever whenever they reach out. And when we direct them to. There's both end.
And will you also be, uh, providing opportunities to, um, so I, I think most of us, if not all of us, have community chats. So, uh, presenting this information to the, our constituents. Um, I would love to, as we move along in, in the process, maybe in the spring or later on, to bring it to, um, our constituents.
Thank you for that. And I do think we need to get, I need to take some time with other leaders in the system to think about benchmarking so that if we're clear about who has capacity, when can we responsibly begin engaging families with it? Not to put it off, because it's important that families are engaged to help us with these solutions to problems. Um, but we definitely want to make sure that we're, um, prepared to do that and do it in, in a timely manner. And I think spring sounds, sounds realistic.
One more question, since I still have a little bit of time. How are we, um, how are we rolling it out? So how are we making the announcement that, that, you know, we know that it's there, but how are we making it a point that everybody knows that is there and how are they able to access it?
Okay. So that's a, that's also a very good question. And, and, and Betsy Weiss, she's the big communicator on the team because she's like, David, how are we going to make sure everybody knows? Are we putting it in the PGCPs express? Do people understand that this Hanover thing exists? So we have to have a really strong communications plan. And I'll be very transparent with you. I didn't want to do a whole lot of work to make it available to everyone right now because we know we have to make sure that people can get their questions answered in a responsible way. Um, so we need to put a plan together to make sure that the rollout, um, is solid. So when we come back in February, I'm making a note. Stephanie's taking a note right now because I can see you're doing it. We're going to make sure that we are, um, queued up for that. So thank you for the push.
Thank you so much. I'm excited.
You're welcome.
Any other questions?
I see no more hands. So I mean, it was a great time with you.
No, no, I just was trying not to, you, you know, I was going to wait till everybody else and I was going to ask mine. Okay. I see hands. I see hands. Okay. Uh, Board Chair Judy McInnes Murray? Hey, you're, you're mute.
We can go with Vice Chair Pamela.
Oh yeah, that's right. So I apologize, Vice Chair, um, Vice Chair Pamela Boozer Strather.
All right. Thank you. Thank you so much, Dr. Reese and team. Um, I had the, um, pleasure of taking the summer course on the equity dashboard along with the, um, uh, results of the focus groups, uh, for the climate and culture survey. And I, um, I think I expressed to you, Dr. Reese, at the time that it was, um, just, uh, kind of, you know, one of the most, um, kind of emotional moments as a board member of the data that showed how we, we could see our success moving. We could see evidence of strategic plan in the last five years in the summer equity study groups and the equity leads, um, and blueprint. But at the same time, the data that, um, of the more work to do. And I think that this dashboard is the, is finally the, the evidence of the data to make for decision-making. So I just want to congratulate everyone on, on that investment and working with Hanover because I know for years we've been talking about it and how we would reach this moment in time. And, uh, I see all the potential. So I did want to ask if you could talk about how the, the data and the equity strategic plan is feeding into the budget cycle. Cause I know it's December 5th is not far off from when a, a budget, new budget will be presented for 24, 25. If there's anything you could comment on at this point, uh, regarding, uh, budget priorities.
So there are a couple of quick things. First, Board Member Boozer Strather, thank you for the reminder that the Strategic Planning and Resource Management Office has held sessions that any staff member could have come to, to learn about the dashboard. Um, and that kind of connects to, um, Board Member LaSaya Frazier's question around what does the rollout look like? But that was people reading and saying, oh, I want to check this out. Let me click on it and see what's happening. And so that's people going because they're naturally curious and they can become our brand ambassadors to build other people's capacities. So when it's more, when it's mandated, there is a category of people who can help their responses. Now regarding the budget cycle, there are two things I want to tell you about our office, the Office of Diversity, Equity and Belonging. We have about our teachers, our staff members are doing a lot of work. And they're, they're pulling double duty and sometime, in some instances, right? So every school right now does not have a school-based equity lead. We have about thirty who don't in full transparency. And it's because there's so much work happening in schools that people haven't, in some instances, signed up to do this very important role to support the leadership teams learning. So our office is asking to increase the stipend of the school-based equity lead who's doing a lot of work. Um, not a lot of money, but it's going to be an increase that we're going to be asking for the school board to support so that we can do a better job of rewarding the people and, and saying thank you um, for the hard work that they're doing, going above and beyond, and maybe entice some others to do it. And then on the, the, the school side, when we think about Title I and then monitoring and accountability, there are, and, um, Ms. D'Souza and, and, and monitoring accountability, now we're having this conversation around how principals will be able to see very clearly what their focus areas could be and perhaps should be in very clear ways that they hadn't been able to before, which could help them think about the resources that they will need to help, um, support more students. And so I think this, they, they're already doing that work in our schools, but I think they'll be able to do it with a lot more intentionality. And that should help drive the decisions that they're making in time for the new budget cycle. And so we are introducing, reintroducing to all principals in the next month. And so a lot of this work will be happening right as the budget, um, sit- situation is queuing up. Did I, I hope I answered all your questions.
Uh, yes, thank you.
You're welcome.
Board Chair Judy McInnes Murray?
Thank you so much. Uh, Dr. Reese, I'm always impressed when I hear from you everywhere you present. You, you teach in a way that is clear and we all understand it. My question is around the equity leads. That's a dual role within the school system. In other words, are, are those teachers that in addition to the teaching, they have it, have this responsibility?
Yes. Oftentimes it's a teacher. Sometimes it is someone who might be, um, you know, and I use the word teacher loosely, right? But you might be a librarian. And in some instances where there is no certificated staff member who was willing to do it or able to do it, there are some non-certificated staff members who are doing an amazing job of leading for equity and getting a lot of monthly training with our office. So Stephanie, Jorance and Jason are doing a lot of work to really build their capacity. And Betsy and I are kind of, you know, guides on the side, uh, to, to really support that learning. So there's a lot of intentional learning happening for them.
Okay. Let me ask you this. What about paraprofessionals? Could paraprofessionals fill that role with that requirement or not?
And so I'm not the, I'm not the strongest person with contracts. I'll be, I'm always going to be transparent with you all.
It's fine.
There is no one who is able to, if there is no one from certain, um, bargaining units who is able to do the, perform the role, then it opens up to other people. I, I'm almost certain that I'm correct about that. Ms. White, do you have any more clarification? As a former principal in our system?
All right. I was going to say so. I believe, and it's only been two years, but it is my understanding that only unit one, um, members can participate with the stipend, with the, yeah, with the stipends of the school. Uh, paraprofessionals are not unit one and therefore they are not eligible to participate. I think it's definitely something that should change. We, at least at my school, we had amazing paraprofessionals that if they were entrusted to substitute long-term for a teacher, they should surely be able to be school-based equity lead. So I think that's definitely something that should be considered.
Okay. I appreciate this conversation because one of the things that we continue to learn as we grapple with the blueprint and all of those new requirements that they have and putting on teachers, we must get them some help. This board understands that very clearly. So if we can think outside the box, you guys have some suggestions that you please go through the superintendent to come to us with because we're not trying to circumvent any processes, but to help us to see the merits. And if you can help us to see the merits and make the case, then there could be some other opportunities where we partner either with the unions or, or however. All I'm saying is that it's clear. We need additional help in those classrooms and we need to figure out how to, how to make that happen. So thank you. Thank you so much. But, uh, Dr. Reese, again, I love seeing you present. I really do. You are very good at this craft. Thank you.
Thank you for those kind words. I was trained to be a teacher. This is what teachers do. And I will say, I know, um, Ms. Ms. Bailey and Ms. Weiss the same way, but Ms. Bailey is, when, when think about possibilities and pushing the status quo to make something happen. She is, um, the, the phrase like a dog on a bone about it and kind of relentless. So we definitely look to see if we can make some changes so that more people can be included and learning that makes a difference.
Remember LaSaya Frazier?
I could speak about this all day. So I'm like, I'm going to contain my excitement, but I'm wondering in terms of best practices, looking at the budget, looking at, we have thirty-three high schools. Um, how we look at the neighboring jurisdictions, uh, practices. I know that coming from Arlington County, um, we have diversity, equity and inclusion coordinators at each of the high schools. They work with our students. They, um, their focus is to close the opportunity gap. Where are we in that sort of creativity? I'm thinking thirty-three high schools. Can we start with seventeen coordinators? I don't know. I know it's a big pie in the sky, but, um, just wondering where we are in that thought process.
It is pie in the sky. And I'm going to actually, um, ask Ms. Bailey if she would give a little, a couple of comments to this. I know as we were working with the, so we have one stipended position for the school-based equity lead and one of their first tasks, if they can, is to form an equity team. And over the last few years, we've been doing this work. It's something that she as an equity coach have really been pushing the equity leads around. So Ms. Bailey, can you give any examples or a, um, a story about how an equity team has formed at a high school or at a school and how they're moving the work?
Um, I can. I think at one particular high school I'm thinking of, they got a lot of responses for staff who just wanted to be participatory in the equity team. Um, the team set some goals around one of their focus areas as a school. And what they decided was that like, it's not the role of one person in the school to do this. We need to support the capacity of all of our staff members around this particular goal. Um, so I think what we've seen is that for our equity leads overall, like the ones that are most successful have been able to garner support from the whole staff and really lead the whole staff around, um, equity practices for specific needs in the school. Um, principals have gone in and done observations and provided feedback around specific areas that the teams have been looking at. Um, and even our team has gone into some, I'm thinking of elementary schools, but we've been into different schools to do learning walks and provide feedback around areas of need for the schools as well. Um, so we do not have specific DEI coordinators at the schools right now, but I think that our schools are starting to see that we need buy-in from the whole staff in order to really be effective in closing the gaps that we're seeing and to lessen disproportionality.
And Board Member LaSaya Frazier, I appreciate the visioning because we asked you all to be rigorous with us. And you know, one of our team members, Dr. Campbell said, and then Ms. White, when she came on board, said, this is the position, like this is a FTE with, with, with what our vision is for what this could become. So stay tuned for more, um, more board requests.
I agree.
I don't see any more questions, but I'm going to ask, and if you have any more questions, um, please just raise your hand so we can engage in this discussion. But I too, I, I'm just chomping at the bit. I was like, I wanted to ask first, me, 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 please. Um, because this is just powerful data. And, uh, between the meeting last week where we saw that data and that was just a breath of fresh air to see that data disaggregated that way. And then to come here and to see the data dashboard. And I'm thinking, how did I miss the summer course? And I'm sure Board Member Pamela Boozer Strather probably told me about it. And now I'm mad that I missed that course because I feel like I'm missing out on something. So let us know when you are training again or make it intentional because I, I want to ensure that I participate in the course, whatever you have training so that, um, I also can see what the dashboard, um, just dig deeper in the dashboard. Um, you talked about principles of responsible data use. I'm thinking about my question, um, for that because as I see you rolling this out, I can see how this day, the power in this data, but I can see how it can also, um, I don't want to speak in the negative. So I'm not sure how to put it, but basically it can be used in a manner which, in, in which it was not intended, right? So the goal of this data is to look, really look at where we are and then to challenge where we are as individuals. Um, and what we need to do with the dispro- disproportionality that we're seeing. Or for example, the example that you used when you, you looked at the data and you said, um, Latinx students have the least amount of referrals to the state. Celebrate it, but how do we use that data so that we are moving our students forward? And what is it that we need to do so that we can see this behavior in different, you know, student groups? So talk to me about the professional development because you're well-versed and even in the way you presented the data, you can tell that you live this, like you sleep, you dream, everything, you live this, but everybody's not there yet. How do we get them bite at a time so that it's not misused, for lack of a better word?
All right. So thank you for, thank you for that question. And so I have a belief. And the belief is we should not use data to wound and to hurt and to embarrass. But at the same time, we can use data for accountability to look at areas of improvement and give critical feedback. And I think the spirit in which we offer that critical feedback as a learning organization and in a learning culture, um, the spirit in which we give it absolutely matters. So when I think about the principles of responsible data use, I'm thinking about some, some professional learning that a lot of people in our system were engaged with, um, with the data-wise improvement process. And now we're using, um, PDSA with Carnegie. But in that, there is this tool called the ladder of inference. And in Prince George's County, we spent a lot of time, a lot of time, and you still see ladder of inference posters everywhere. What do I see? What can I observe? What can I, inference can I actually make based off of what I see? Ask questions about it before I jump to action and taking conclusions. And because we've done so much work with that across our district, we have a lot of muscle memory for how to engage, um, in, in data practices so that there is some safety around the data. But we act in understanding, but we actually do take, take meaningful action. So I think as a system, we will need to recommit to scaling that beyond the staff and to families and others so that there is a data culture and a way of looking at data that we all understand. So that we can really ask hard questions and tough questions and point to things that are unacceptable for the purpose of understanding why it looks the way that it looks without thinking that it's because we can't or we haven't, or we don't care to do something differently because most of us really do care and want to do better. Um, so I just, I always start with that belief.
Thank you. That's very helpful. And it's good to know that there was, that, um, the staff. So I'm, I'm assuming it went down, not down, but to the teacher level, principal, central office staff with the ladder of inference. So as you come back with this data dashboard, it would be something that you're just bringing back as a refresher as you're looking at the data.
Every single time, just like Dr. Weiss, uh, student learner profile, every single time as a, as an image, just to anchor us. This is how we do our thing in PGCPs.
Awesome. Any other questions, discussions, discussion points?
I think just one more thing in terms of messaging. I think that, um, going back to that communications plan and how we're gonna roll it out to the general community, it's important to, to share that this is a base one. It provides us a beginning, it provides us a way to plan for the future and it gives us the opportunity to not only plan out for, uh, one or two years, but five and ten and twenty, right? So it gives us an opportunity to grow and that if we use a growth mindset for this, this opportunity, I think that then, um, those potential negative inferences can be eradicated. Or we can work towards the, the beauty of what this brings to our town. Just saying in terms of messaging and communications will be key.
Thank you so much. I have a couple of next steps that I want to make sure that, that, that the team is capturing. One is to connect with them, our Strategic Planning Resource Management Office. I know Vanessa Weatherington is probably out there watching right now so that we can do some specific work with, uh, with, um, the school board and others to reintroduce, um, this powerful platform. And I do take, um, take your, your, your feedback seriously. So I think starting with static slides that everybody can see and notice and wonder with together around some of our critical areas of focus for academics and mental health can help us see what the dashboard can do before we start to play in it so that we can kind of create an expectation of how we look at the data, what is in there before people kind of go into the public facing portal and do some of their own disaggregation. So those are two things that I'm taking away, um, from this time. And I know that Ms. Bailey probably has lots of other stuff.
I have a follow-up question. As you worked with the academics team, were, what were the conversations around or have we started conversations around how we marry teaching and learning, curriculum writing, um, professional development with what we're seeing in the data dashboard?
So I was, I was standing in front of the room, um, with, with all four hundred people in there. What, what I will say is we had people saying, there's data that's missing. Where is data from this content area? How do we get it into the dashboard? So they were put, I love a good pushback because when you push, that means we get better. And so through Dr. McDaniels' team, we're actually working to make sure that we get some social studies data and some science data in the dashboard that was a social studies teacher. It wasn't even in the dashboard. I was like, David, what are you doing? This is your content. But we all sometimes have blind spots. I mean, I don't mean to say blind spots. Sometimes we are, our vision, sometimes we don't see things in the same ways. I want to be careful about, um, being ableist when I say things like blind, blind spots, so my apologies. So we're taking people's feedback from that, that was a powerful team. And I, I can't unfortunately tell you about all the different rich conversations that they had, but they were abuzz, um, with the possibilities. And at some point, um, Dr. Daniel, McDaniel, I'm sorry, I could probably tell you more.
I will just say that, um, similar to the experiences that Dr. Reese said with, um, other audiences, everyone was amazed that, oh wait, we have this data, someone's collecting this data. It's not just, you know, the little bits and pieces that we, um, you know, we're collecting on our own. So it was exciting for the data that was there to just see it all in one place and know where to be able to refer to it. And again, um, as you mentioned, my team did push back around some of them not already included. And Dr. Miller, you would have been one of them as well as a former science supervisor. Um, and so they did, um, want to ensure that their data was represented as well.
Thank, yeah, that hurt to hear science was one to not include it hurt real bad.
Include it soon.
Okay. Board Member and Vice Chair Pamela Boozer Strather?
Thank you. One feedback that I gave, I pretty sure it was through the comments after the class was the, um, one thing I couldn't track was students that were tag identified and then that their participation in, in the specialty programs at high school like science and tech. And that is, uh, that is something that is talked a lot about in my district. This assumption that your tag identified that you're going to get those seats because you're going to get algebra in middle school and you're going to be more ready for the PSAT. And, um, that was, there, the data didn't allow for that, like to, um, it, I think it was in there, but the, the dashboard itself. And I know for sure that that's a question that I hear a lot. There's a lot of parents who are so concerned about tag identification because of that belief that it is the way to Eleanor Roosevelt, Science and Tech, or Duval, or Oxon Hill. So that is, that's something that, that I, I could use as a board member to see what those trends truly are.
That's very, um, thank you, Board Member Boozer Strather. So I, you know, I'll always be transparent and as honest as I, as I can be, but, but my honesty doesn't mean that I'm right, okay? So this equity data dashboard is a really, really powerful tool and it can do some things, but it cannot and will not do everything. So the wondering that I'm left with is when we have a question like the one that you posed around tag trends, what are the ways that we can, what are the ways we can answer that question in PG CPS? Because sometimes the more nuanced questions might require Dr. Strater's team or Dr. White's team to do a different level of analysis with us. It might be able to happen in the dashboard, but it might not. But whether it can happen there or not, doesn't mean that we shouldn't be able to provide you with the, the answer.
Yeah, I appreciate that, thank you.
Board Chair Judy McInnes Murray?
Thank you. Uh, I'm not sure if this question should be asked here, but what I am thinking about is the impact of, of chronic absenteeism and, um, and climate in the schools on the learning. And do you capture that? And I don't know if you do, but I do know that it is a problem for our system.
Yes, this dashboard does capture that in a couple of different ways. What we showed you with the dropdowns was one, um, way that you can look at data, but we also have a different thing that, um, I like to call it the splash page, which is other coded grid with like light green to light orange and dark orange. And it shows over and under representation. I don't want to get too fancy, but absenteeism is something that we can look at across a lot of different demographics, um, in terms of race, ethnicity, um, socioeconomic status, and lots of other different demographic, um, criteria. So we can have a, we, we might, when we do our work with the school board, start with some of the absenteeism data so that we can do some noticings and wonderings around it.
Okay, then I appreciate that. So when you create this class, not create it, but make this opportunity available for Dr. Miller, can you please include me so that I can attend that training? Thank you.
All are welcome, you got it.
Vice Chair Pamela Boozer Strather?
Yeah, I just wanted to follow up with Chair McInnes Murray that abs, that absenteeism is a data point. And when I reference my initial reactions when I, um, got in there and looked at data, absenteeism was one of the ones that just hit me so hard and why you hear me paying more attention to it around the, uh, report card and MSDE and what absenteeism truly is because it is, we are, you know, also a system that, you know, the beginning of last school year, not, not this one, but when we returned in full after, um, COVID closure, our, our former superintendent sent out a letter that said, please keep your kids home if you have any symptoms, right? There's our COVID, RSV, the flu. And then at the same time, you have principals saying, I need my kids in the building for my report card. Like it's just not going to be fair. So, and I think it's a public health thing. So I think absenteeism as a data point in the equity dashboard also isn't split among health and other reasons. And I think health and those other reasons are critical. Like, and I think we could, as PG CPS demonstrate, you know, why I disagreed with the, the, you know, the now former state superintendent when his answer back to us at MAB was apps, being absent is being absent. I completely disagree. I think that, that we have to go deeper. So I, I said that as a plea to the state board and state superintendent. So I'll just say it here internally to us, you know, that, that we have some responsibility on that as well.
And, and, and thank you, uh, Board Member Pamela Boozer Strathers. And one of the things that I am looking at is how can we as school, as the school board assist with that? Because I know it's a problem. I know that it's all hands on deck. So how can these hands help you guys with that piece?
That's an awesome question, thank you. And there are some people who can answer it better than I can in our school system. So hopefully they're listening, but I'll be reaching out to them. I do want to make a, do a quick teaching point though, and I'm not going to ask you all to answer this question, um, in class tonight. But, um, if I were to ask you, what is chronic absenteeism? Think about what your answer is. And then think about if you expect that your answer is the same as everyone else's answer. And so when I say principles of responsible data use as a system, there's this thing again called assessment or data literacy. When we're looking at these data, we would all know exactly what the definition of chronic absenteeism is. How many days, over what period of time? And how much of a day counts as chronically absent? If you have a doctor's note, is it the same as not having a doctor's note? And that's not to say little David could be in class not paying Chair McInnes Murray any attention. I could just be sitting there and not paying at all, right? But I'm present.
You don't just manage expectations, thank you.
But I always pay you attention, right? But there's so many ways of thinking about what it means to be absent and what it means to be present. And I love to think about these things all the time as a thinker. But I know as a system, we have to be very calibrated around our understanding of what's in the data before we have any conversation about what we feel about it or what we should do about it or all of those things because we might not be having the same conversation.
Correct.
So when I tell you all, I want you to be patient with us with this is because we have a lot of teaching and learning to do. Which doesn't mean that we aren't taking action, but we want to make sure that people are prepared as best as possible to use the data in positive ways that can really, um, impact outcomes.
So with this data dashboard, um, I think more so like a logistical question. You, this came about as a partnership with Hanover Research. Is it like a month, a, a yearly subscription? Does it go away at some point? What do we need to know as a board so that we can ensure that it stays as you are trying to scale it so that we're using it, um, syst- systemically?
So through Dr. Strater's budget every year, he puts a request in, um, and he makes sure that, that, that funding is there. So thank you for approving Dr. Strater's budget. And I know there are other people, um, like Dr. McDaniel's team has a relationship with Hanover Research, not for this purpose, but for other purposes. Um, and one thing, just to, to toot our PG CPS horn for a moment, we were in a conversation with the research team from Hanover Research. They said, we love what PG CPS is doing with this dashboard because we're doing things that other systems are not doing with it and really trying to make sure, I mean, we actually, in the academics meeting, we crashed the system because there were so many people in it. And, and so we have to figure that, they, that's a problem that they now have to solve when they're excited about it. Uh, so this is, um, lots of promise, but, um, again, Dr. Strater through his budget, uh, takes care of all of that in his requests.
I was trying to practice my weight time, I'm not that good. Any more questions? Okay, seeing none, um, this is great and I look forward to, to, uh, additional conversations. I actually do have another question. I, I don't know whether it's for Dr. Reese or Dr. McDaniel. When you come back the next time, I know you're bringing, um, stakeholders who at the school level, right? And, and they're using this. Are we, i- is this a possibility that they could talk to us about how they're using it? The impact on instruction, impact on culture and climate? Just curious, what was the? So we can see the impact of what this is having at a school level?
Yes, that's the exact, um, vision that we had that you would just give some of the basic information in the initial presentation and then you can hear from those actually, um, implementing whatever, in this case, the dashboard and how they're using it, um, both positive, their positive experiences, if there are any, um, next steps that they're recommending, um, just so you can hear it straight from, um, those who are utilizing it.
That's great, thank you, thank you. All right, with that, um, colleagues, follow-up items from September eleventh, twenty twenty-three committee meeting have been posted on board docs for your review. And I would like to thank the equity team, the curriculum and instruction team. This has been totally, totally amazing. And I, I mean, just we've, I know I've learned a lot, um, and really excited. And so to the teams, to the board office, to the board staff, to my colleagues, just thank you for another great meeting. And if we have no more questions, I'm gonna close. So may I have a motion to adjourn? Can I make a motion to adjourn? All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. So it is now six forty PM and we are adjourned, so have a great evening.
Thank you.